Thank you. This is in public session.
Oh, perfect.
And so we will proceed. For the pledge of allegiance, if we could have Representative Campbell and Mr. Chip Davis lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen and citizens. You'll get to meet these two gentlemen in just a few minutes. Under a public announcement, June the first at 5:00 was the deadline for packets to be submitted for those running for office here in Cave Creek. There'll be 11 candidates running for council and three for mayor. So best of luck to everybody there. And for a complete list, you can go to the town's website. Call to the public, Kerry?
Spencer, Chumidi?
Hi. My name is Spencer Chumidi. I live at 31067 North 45th Street, Cave Creek, Arizona. I'm a member of the Cactus Shadows Mountain Biking Team, and our team works closely with the Desert Foothills Mountain Bike Association and sometimes referred to as the DFMBIA. The Desert Foothills Mountain Bike Association is the organization that raises funds, recruits volunteers, organizes and manages the maintenance on our trails, and that is at no cost to the town. So here's a list of some of the completed work that the local mountain bike team and club has done in the past six months. So first, DFMBIA worked with the Cactus Shadows Mountain Biking Team, teaching us basic trail maintenance techniques. And our team volunteers to give back to the community by helping to maintain the trails. This weekend, the high school team is going to be working on 52nd Street and Surrey Drive in order to maintain some of the trails there along with DFMBIA. This will be done at no cost to the city. All volunteer work. The second, currently DFMBIA is working with Marshall Stein to develop a rescue map for our annual race, commonly known as C4, which is the Cave Creek Cactus Classic. It is DFMBIA's only fundraiser to accomplish the work done by DFMBIA on behalf of the town of the Cave Creek. Third, DFMBIA participates participated with Maricopa County in planning the Prickly Pedal Mountain Bike Race this year, including course repairs and preparations. This event is common or the Prickly Pedal Race has brought additional revenue into the town of Cave Creek from the tourism. Fourth, the two members of the Desert Foothills Mountain Bike Association attended a workshop in Prescott, Arizona, to learn specialized advanced tech skills necessary to maintain some of our rugged town trails. Lodging and travel expenses were also paid by the mountain bike club. And also, fifth, there were three other projects completed by DFMBIA on behalf of the town. Our town has an incredible resource and assets in its trails. It's difficult to qualify the value and impossible to overstate the benefits of our trails here in Cave Creek. The town is very fortunate to attract residents who are passionate, committed to helping the town maintain a community resource. Our Cactus Shadows High School Mountain Bike Team hopes the town recognizes the value of our trails and the organizations and volunteers who spend significant efforts to maintain them. Thank you.
Young man, we do recognize. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
It's not going on notice. Call to the public is still open.
Lorraine Montori?
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lorraine Montori, and I am the president of the Desert Foothills Mountain Bike Association, sometimes referred to as DFMBIA. And I'd like to thank Spencer for from the Cactus Shadows High School Team for his comments tonight. Obviously, our club, as well as the Cactus Shadows High School Team, is very, very passionate about our Cave Creek trails. We recognize the incredible benefits of having a great trail system in our community. As you may recall, back in March, DFMBIA was invited to apply for a $7,500 grant from REI. The project we chose was the Cave Creek Gateway Trailhead. We requested help from the town for this effort, and the town graciously passed and adopted Resolution Number R 2016-08 to support our efforts for the development of Phase One of the Cave Creek Gateway Trailhead. So we submitted our REI grant request for $7,500 at the end of March. Very recently, we heard back from REI. They did not approve the requested $7,500. REI chose instead to give us $10,000 towards this trailhead. So needless to say, we are absolutely thrilled at REI's recognition of the value this trailhead will provide to our community. And over the coming months, we will work with the town and our trail building partner, Okanagan Trail Construction, to develop an appropriate plan for this project. Our club would like to have a community volunteer day to assist with building the trailhead and hopes to have an official ribbon-cutting celebration when the trailhead opens to the public. We hope the mayor and the town council will be honored guests at both of these events, especially including the Trail Work Volunteer Day. We welcome whatever input and assistance you can provide. We'd like to thank REI and the town for their support of what surely will be a wonderful community resource and asset. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no other speakers, Mayor.
Okay. Lorraine, if you would at some point get with Bambi, you know, our trails coordinator for the REI contacts, so we can write a letter and thank them.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Want that to go on notice. Call to the public is still open. Okay, we're going to proceed. Town manager, anything?
Mayor and council, one quick thing. I just wanted to thank Tyler Thurman, the Public Works Foreman, David Peterson and David Snow, both our town engineers. They were able to acquire some GSA, ground surface asphalt, for free, delivered on-site to free. They actually started laying that out. I believe it's complete now, about 2,700, nearly a feet on Spear Cross Road. We've had some complaints because it's gravel down to rock and bones, as we say. So we're trying to find a methodology or way to improve the condition of the road because it's heavily traveled going to Spear Cross. But I just want to thank those three gentlemen. They did a lot of work on that and saved us a lot of money. So, thank you.
Okay. Council will proceed. Onto the consent, approval of the April 25th, special council meeting minutes, and the May 16th, both here, motion to approve. No moves. Second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Onto agenda item number one. And as all of you know, we're certainly in the election season on all levels, local, municipal, state and county, and of course, national. And it's always good for us, since we are in legislative district number one, to get a chance to know the men or women who are running for that office because they do represent us in a much bigger theater, and that is the state. This evening, we have Representative Noel Campbell here, and as a surprise visit, and my legal counsel is going to allow it, Chip Davis, who is also running for the second seat up in legislative district number one. So Representative Campbell, if you'd like to address the citizens of Cave Creek. Mr. Campbell, come here. Your back is to the citizens, and they won't remember your back when it comes time to them.
Okay. So where shall I come, Eric?
Your seat.
I'm quite honored. Thank you. I don't own the chair. I'm Noel Campbell. I'm your duly-elected state representative for this district. I live in Prescott, which, you know, up in northern Arizona here, and I'm in my first term. It's my second year, so I can now find the bathrooms at the Capitol and kind of get around pretty good. I just wanted to spend some time with the city council and residents of this area to let you know who your state representative is. Quickly, my background. I am from Arizona. I grew up in Phoenix. I went to grammar school and high school. I went to St. Mary's High School down in the valley. Graduated in 1960. I spent a year of studies in Mexico City and learned to speak pretty good Spanish. Came back to Arizona State University and graduated in 1965. For the older folks here, you know, at that time, the Vietnam War was heating up, and we had a draft, and I had to make an election of what service to go into. So I went in the U.S. Navy. I became an officer and a pilot. I flew in Vietnam for a year, came back, decided not to make the Navy a career, but stayed in the Navy Reserves and actually retired from the Navy Reserves as a commander. I went to work for the U.S. Customs Service in law enforcement for 27 years. So I have a very good law enforcement background. I spent a lot of time on the border, Nogales, San Isidro, Collexico, El Paso, and I worked in Mexico and Central America, so I have a very good understanding of the border issues. After retiring, I wasn't ready to quit working, so I fought fires for 10 years as a tanker pilot. So I've had a wonderful life, exciting life. I crashed a couple of times. And I decided that when I retired, really, I wanted to get back to my community, so I ran for public office. And I ran against the juggernauts up in our district, Andy Tobin and Karen Phan. I lost twice. So you've got to know a little bit about yourself when you run twice, you lose twice. Do you really want to do it again? Well, I ran again two years ago, and I won. So I am going to run for one another two-year term, and I have cards I'll give you if you'd like. You can contact me or think about voting for me. I'd appreciate that. But the reason I came down tonight is to tell you a little bit about what we did in the legislature this year. I think we did quite a bit. We dealt with some major issues down there, and I'm going to talk about them because we dealt with Proposition 123 and Proposition 124. And then we did a great deal of work, and I was able to pass a bill, House Bill 2107, that deals with the structured sober living homes that we have in Prescott. It's a real problem for our community. And I worked on that bill for the two years I've been down there, and I worked on the public safety retirement system, Prop 124. I worked on that for a year. And on Prop 123, which is public funding for our K-12 education, worked on that a year. So I want to briefly talk about Prop 123. I am a conservative Republican, but I do support public education. But let me say, I support homeschooling. I support private schools, charter schools. I support whatever works in education. And we're very fortunate here in our district to have really fine public schools. And, you know, public schools have to deal with 85% of the students that go to school. Their other 15% go to the private charters, homeschooling. And they needed our help, and we were able to do that. We were able to get funding into K-12. It was supported by the Arizona Education Association. It was pretty much of a bipartisan bill. It allowed us to put $3.5 billion into our K-12 education system over the next 10 years, and it was done without having to raise taxes. And it was funded by the state trust lands that we have in Arizona for the express purpose of public education. The state trust lands, we have over $70 billion of assets in state trust lands, and we have a corpus fund, like a bank account, of over $5 billion. And that fund went from $1 billion to $5 billion, and every year, we were taking 2.5% of that fund and giving it to public education. Governor Ducey realized that the public education needed, we needed to get money into the system and in a hurry. So he brought forth the idea that we would increase funding from the state trust corpus from 2.5% to 6.5%, I believe. And that will make the corpus of $5 billion grows more slowly, but we believe that the corpus will not diminish, and that that's the purpose of it. So we can disagree on that, but that is the way that we proceeded. It was a heavy lift, and we were able to immediately get funds that are going to go into the K-12 school system. The voters looked at that in the special election and passed it, and that is now law. And I'm happy that I supported it because I support good schools. I support whatever works in education. Every citizen, every young man or young woman that comes out of our schools who's educated is a win for our society. I don't care how that happens. And so, but it is our responsibility to take care and fund education for 85% of these kids that go to our public schools. We're very fortunate, as I said, we have good schools. There are schools in the downtown metropolitan area that are not as good, and there's a lot of reasons for that. But we need to work on that. I will say this one thing about public schools. They have to deal with special needs students. The special needs student population is about 14% of the student bodies of these schools, but they consume about 26% of the assets. Charters and public, private and parochial schools, they don't have to deal with that. They really deal with the upper cream of the crop in a way. So our public schools are need support and are worthy of support. But at the same time, we are finding more money for them. We have to be very straight in asking these school districts to economize. I'll give you a good example. Up in Yavapai County, Upper Island, we have three school districts in very close proximity. And we could save some money in the economy to scale if we just had one school district. So when the schools are asking us at the legislature for money, I'm telling them, we're going to look at your needs, but you have to come forward too. You have to make the cuts in the economy of scale that's needed because times are tough. We're not out of the woods yet on our economy. We could easily go back into a recession. So if we're going to have to come up with money, we have to know it's going to be well-spent and that the school districts are meeting us more than halfway. Proposition 124, I worked on that for a year as a former law enforcement officer. I was very concerned about the retirement systems our firefighters and law enforcement officers have. You know, it's a difficult time to be a police officer in this country, as you all know. And it's a difficult time to be a firefighter. We hear a lot of things about their retirement system, and some of it is true and some of it's not true. But I will say this, we can't find police officers. We can't even find enough officers to man the Department of Public Safety training classes because we don't pay them enough, and the risks are so onerous to be out there that people don't want to do it. And when you start to lose the thin blue line of fire and police, you know you're in a world of hurt. So Proposition 124 dealt with the overarching loss of the pension fund. As most of you know, each city and county makes a contract with their police and fire. But the retirement fund, the funds that go in, are going to one general fund that's managed by a board. And at one time, that fund was funded at about 100%. But during the recession and then bad investments, the fund dropped down to about 47%, which means there's only 47 cents to pay every dollar of retirement owed to these retirees. No retirement fund can sustain that. And people in the cities, like my town of Prescott, $72 million in debt to the retirement fund. We're an older department. Some cities do better. They have younger officers and firefighters, and they're contributing and not drawing retirement yet. So this crisis was coming on us, and the legislature had to deal with it. And so, in a sense, and this is just a summary of what the sides gave up. The firefighters and retirees were getting a 4% COLA every year compounded, and that was unsustainable because the fund was decreasing while they're still paying a 4% COLA. So under Prop 124, that 4% COLA has been eliminated, and we will now go to a 2% COLA only if certain economic conditions are met. The present, the retirees, their contract, they're retired, they're defined benefits, retirement, basically, not much we could do about that. The present workers, we can encourage them in to contribute more money to their retirement, which will happen, even though that's under a court-ordered review right now. Cases will be coming up with to see whether that contribution rate is going to be maintained. We think it should be. The real impact on the retirement is at the new hires. Anybody that's hired after July 1st of 2017 will come under a whole different program. There'll be a less, much less risk to the taxpayer because that's who, that's who funds the debt, is the taxpayer. So that burden on the taxpayer in Prescott and other communities is such a heavy lift that we're thinking about having to have a special election to raise the sales tax just to pay for our retirement up in Prescott. So it's a very, it's a very edgy issue, and we down at the legislature, we have stopped the hemorrhaging. We've stopped the bleeding. We've capped the well, but we have a huge mess to clean up, and that mess is going to take us about 20 years until the present retirees die off and the present workers retire and they pass on. So plus, we have a new board now. The board has gone from seven members to nine members. They have to be experts in the field of investment. The taxpayers pick four of the members. The unions get to pick four of their members, and then a selection of eligible members are presented to the governor. He makes the ninth pick. So with the new board and the investment policy and the fiduciary obligation of the board to the fund, we're going to work our way out of this. It's going to take time, though. And what was the alternative if we didn't pass Prop 124? We could have cities like Prescott, Arizona declare bankruptcy, and that is not good for anybody. I mean, especially the firefighters and the police officers. Their retirements would be handled now by the courts, and we have seen what happens in Detroit. So we didn't want to do that, and the city doesn't want to do it. So we're trying to sway through this and manage it, and hopefully, we can get on top of it and start whittling it down, but it's going to take time. Every city, every county is in a different position, but every city and every county does face these retirement costs. And we now have at least a pathway to build up the fund and have enough money to pay their retirements. And of course, the new hires coming in, they will be strictly defined contributions. There'll be a small defined benefits portion. They'll have social security, and they'll have their own savings, but the taxpayer's burden will be equally shared. It won't be a 90, a 90, 40 right now is what these cities have to pay for their retirement for their law enforcement officers. So it's going to take time, and I wish I could explain it better than I have, but it's a very detailed thing, and it's been passed. So Prop 124. And lastly, the thing I'd like to talk about that affects my city greatly and affects other cities, not as bad as the problem we have in Prescott, is with the structured sober living homes that we have. For some reason, Prescott, and I understand the reason, has become the structured sober living home mecca of the country. Prescott has a population of 44,000, and we are on the top 10 list of where these structured sober living homes are. And when I say structured sober living home, that's a home where young people, men or women, who are drug abusers, go for treatment. They don't receive treatment in the home, but they are bused to a licensed treatment facility to receive whatever the treatment they get, then they're brought back to the home. The problem with it is twofold or threefold, actually. This is a cash cow business. This is drug rehab business, and that's how I got involved in politics. I had two of these right behind me. You have young men coming in from all parts of the country into a small homogeneous community of older people. And at last count, we had, I think, 156 documented structured sober living homes in Prescott, the downtown area, and we think there's probably more than 200. The structured sober living home business is twofold. We have good providers there. We have reputable providers who are licensed by the state of Arizona. They do provide a good service, but they're expensive. The least expensive model of treatment is called the Florida Model, and that's where we're dealing with these structured sober living homes. So a person will come in and rent a house in a neighborhood from the owners. You know, the homes are bigger there, and the people who own them are older, and they don't want to maintain the house, so they'll rent a big house. And the next thing, a van shows up, and they're unloading beds, and all of a sudden, you've got 10, 12 people living in a residential neighborhood, and it's caused great problems and consternation with the residents of Prescott. These young people coming in, you know, part of the rehab is the smoke. They smoke like chimneys, and they're throwing stuff around. So that has caused problems with the neighborhood. But more than that is that we don't think that these homes are providing the standard of care that this industry says they should be getting. In other words, a large part of this business of structured sober living home is not providing the care that's really needed. And we know that because when the money runs out from the insurance or the parents who are paying for it, these kids are put on the street, and they then become a burden for the city of Prescott, homeless. It's a huge problem there. And at any one time, we have about 1,400 young people, adults, walking around our town. We see them every place. The reason it's so popular for Prescott is because they have drug rehabilitation magazines that are like tour magazines, Tout, coming up to the mountain air and pines and rehabbing. That's an industry. And so they advertise, and if you're a parent and you've got a child that's got a drug abuse problem, well, you would rather have him receiving drug abuse treatment in a cool mountain air community, it's clean, than say, in Phoenix. It just makes sense. So that's the reason we have such a grave problem up in Prescott. When I first went into the legislature, I promised the voters that I would work on this issue. And so the first year I was down there, I ran my bill, and it would have put these structured sober living homes under the license of the treating facility. And as such, any complaint that was made against that structured sober living home would have to be investigated by the Department of Health Services. They'd have to do a full report, look at the occupancy, look at the house, make sure things are up to the code that they should be. But that bill failed in the Senate. I got it out of the House, and basically, they considered it a local problem, and it wasn't a statewide problem, so you deal with it at the local level, at the Prescott or county level. I was given a special committee. I had four meetings. Insurance residents came down, the industry testified. And so out of the ad hoc committee, recommendations were that we deal with this situation at the lowest level, which is at the city or county level. So my bill, House Bill 2107, gives permissive authority to cities and counties to do certain regulations that are not onerous through ordinances. And so 2107 passed with overwhelming support, both Democrat and Republican, in the House, and it passed the Senate. There's 30 senators. It got 29 votes. One senator was absent. So it got complete unanimous support in the Senate. Came back, was amended, and passed out of the House again, and went up to Governor Ducey, and he signed that bill. So 2107 is law, and what it does, it allows a city or municipality or a county to have permissive authority, which means they can do something or not do something. And what they can do is they can set ordinances in that would require these structured sober living homes to make a written report to the city about where they are, what the contractual relationship is between that house and that treating facility, number of patients in the house, ordinances that would give the city the authority to ensure that the monitor of the house has a certain amount of basic training, possibly. These will all be set by the city, but it could be that he would have to be 21 years of age, have a high school diploma or a GED, and have been sober for a certain amount of time. We now have in these homes monitors who are barely sober themselves, and we've had real problems with that. Also, the cities or counties could require health and safety inspection on these premises to go in and make sure that there's enough adequate fire extinguishers, occupancy space for the number of people living in the house. And they could also require an exit strategy that when the money runs out or the insurance money runs out, that this structured sober living home have an exit strategy so that they're not just dumping this young person out on the streets of Prescott or any community. And we don't think those are onerous. We think they're reasonable. Really, what we want to do is ensure that a standard of care is met in these homes. Unfortunately, in the past, all too often, that high standard of care that the industry says is there has not been there. So House Bill 2107 affects Prescott and Chandler and Mesa and parts of South Tucson, and believe me, it's coming to a location near you. Scottsdale has reported these homes. It's a very lucrative business, and so this is just the beginning. It's going to, I think, probably get worse before it gets better, but we are making an effort. At least, House Bill 2107 is the first bill that gives the counties and cities some authority to do something if they choose to do it. So with that, I'll end up by saying I'm really glad to be down here. I want to spend more time down here and have you folks get to know me. I want to spend more time down here and have you folks get to know me. I'm a local guy. I'm a clean elections candidate, which is somewhat unusual, and in fact, that I don't take money from lobbyists or corporations or any of that stuff, and I like it that way. And if you email me, and I'll make sure everybody gets a card that would like one, and you send a phone number with it, I'll call you back. I do that. It may be a week or 10 days, but I generally call everybody back. So, once again, I'm Noel Campbell. I'm your state representative, and thank you so much for the time to speak before you tonight.
Questions from Representative Campbell? In this district, you've got the town of Cave Creek, you've got Dewey-Humboldt, you've got Mayer, you've got Chino Valley, you've got...
Pauldun.
Pauldun, okay.
Saldana, and, not Saldana, but Saldana, Ashfork.
Yeah, and all of those are incorporated, is that correct? Ashfork, is Ashfork incorporated?
That, I think Ashfork is, but I'm not sure about that.
Yeah. Well, here's the thing. April 15th of this year, when we had to put our taxes in, the state of Arizona expects us to tell them, the Department of Revenue expects us to tell them, how much money we spent purchasing things through the mail from out of state so they can get their sales tax for those items. And yet, at the same time, a couple of sessions ago, the state government, in their infinite wisdom, decided that a huge item in a small community like ours, we don't have a concrete plant, we don't have a huge lumberyard, we don't have places to buy building materials. We had this thing called construction sales tax. It was a huge part of our budget. We put, the state of Arizona this year put an $800,000 hole in an operating budget, which is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $8.5 or $9 million total to begin with. That's a big hit. Is there anything that you guys can do to put it back the way it was? Because Phoenix doesn't need the extra money for whatever they're doing, and Chandler doesn't need it, and Flagstaff doesn't need it. We need it. It's a huge part of our budget, and without thinking, and I don't know who they did it for, obviously, they did it for the larger cities who can supply those things. And really, I'm kind of hurt, I'm kind of annoyed over it, as you might be able to tell, and I'm not attacking you, I'm just wondering, as our representative, is there anything that you can do? And if something popped up where somebody had a grand idea to reinstate that, would you be in support of that?
I would be if you'll inform me. You know, this is, not that I have not heard this, but you're in Maricopa County down here, and that, which is, they've pretty much got a stranglehold on the legislature because of the number of representatives that come from Maricopa County. I will say this, we tried in our budgetary process to get things back to the counties, and we were successful. We were able to reinstate $96 million back into the HERF Fund, which is the Highway User Fund. And that's, for years, they've been taking that, sweeping that fund to pay for DPS. Well, we insisted that we get this fund money back. It came back. There were some stipulations on projects that they wanted to use the money for, but it was for construction. There's a new highway going in from Nogales to Mariposa Port to Interstate 19, and there's going to be a widening of the I-17. So, there's going to be some projects, but that, of the 96 million, 60 of it is going to those special projects. So, now the counties get to divide up 36 million, and Maricopa and Pima County take 50% of that. So, my county, like Yavapai County, we come out with a little over $1 million. But it was a start. I mean, you know, I'm not down there to represent anybody, but these districts and cities that are in my district. One of the things that Yavapai County really gets a bad deal on is lottery money. They, we're entitled to half a million dollars every year from the lottery, and we don't get it. They just sweep it. So, we put up the best fight we could on the lottery money and also for juvenile corrections. We spend $400,000 to, we give to the state for our juvenile correction share that we hardly use at all. I mean, we don't have that many juveniles that are going down to state care. So, there are things that we want to do, believe me. We want to try to get the money back into our counties. But here's what we did do. We got funding into public education K-12. That's Prop 123. We got $32 million additional to the university systems, which was a big thing because we're now going to probably have a vet school down at the University of Arizona, which is badly needed. We were able to hold the small school districts harmless. The school districts up here, you know, they put in money to the general fund because of the high property tax rate that they have up here. But, for example, Prescott, because it's a declining school district, we were able to save Prescott over $1 million for their school district. So, we made important gains, but of course, we don't win everything. But yeah, I'm more interested if you, I can't particularly address that. I mean, I'm still somewhat of a freshman down there, and my areas on, the committees I'm on are Transportation and Military Affairs and Public Safety. And transportation issues are not rocket science. You need a road, you need bridges. I mean, it's straightforward. The question is, where do you get the revenue? And the Military Affairs and Public Safety are law enforcement issues, which I'm well aware of, but when you get into these taxing issues and revenue return, but I certainly would take a look at it and work with you as closely as I can.
Now, I guess the bottom line question is if that came before you in a bill, could we expect your support from that?
I'd have to look at the bill, I mean, look at the detail of it, but yeah, I'm inclined to do whatever I can do for the constituents that I represent.
And I just named off a bunch of them who have all been impacted by this, I will guarantee you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Citizens' questions? Okay, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, and I, actually, you gave me one last time you were here, or last time we met somewhere, but I don't know.
Okay, Chip Davis is a supervisor up in Yavapai County, and he's running for the second legislative district, number one, who can see. Mr. Davis.
Mr. Mayor, I could go from here if I spin around once in a while.
You get better votes if they see your face.
Okay, well, I didn't want you to have to stand.
It's not like you're unfamiliar with one of these chairs behind a desk like this with people out there. Been there, done it for 20 years, you said?
Thank you. Oh, you look quite good. We wanted to stop in and say hi. I'm Chip Davis. I'm running for the Arizona House of Representatives. I'm a fourth-generation Arizonan. My wife and I have four kids, and we have 10 grandkids, of which we just left our 10th grandchild's house, which is down here in Cave Creek. So, we wanted to make it a point to, A, come by and say hi to the council members and the mayor, and introduce ourselves, and hope that we can get to know each other so that as issues come up, you'll know the guy you're going to call to help you solve a problem. I mentioned that we have 10 grandkids and that I'm a fourth generation, and I don't say that because I think that natives have any special right or priority to hold office. I tell you that because my family is invested in the state of Arizona. We have been. My mom and dad are still raising cattle on our family ranch that was homesteaded in the 1880s, so we've been around for 130 years. And I have served the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors for 20 years, and I hope to take the knowledge and experience that I've gained down to the Capitol to let them know that rural Arizona has very different issues than metropolitan Arizona does, and make sure that our voice is heard, and hope that there's some common sense put into the legislative process where we don't do goofy things like they screwed with the TPT and hurt our rural communities. So, my main goal was to say hi to you all, introduce myself, give you some information, how to get in touch with us, and also, for you folks that are running for office or citizens, be glad to share my information with you because we like to know what your issues are and see if we can do things to make Cave Creek a little better place. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your hospitality.
Good luck, citizens.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate your brevity.
Huh?
Appreciate your brevity.
the town manager to establish a town process for the abandonment of public right-of-ways and easements.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Actually spoke with Planning Department, Luke Katzman actually put this together. They looked at a variety of different communities and how they do it. My thought was, right now, we don't really have a process in place, whether it's plotted or just fee simple owned. I wanted to have some type of written document mechanism that could come to the council because council has authority to regarding property rights, whether it's to grant them or take them away. But since they have some standardized process that comes to council, and we look at these right-of-way issues, whether they want to abandon a right-of-way or abandon an easement. So, just trying to formalize a process that's just been kind of loosey-goosey for a while. And I also wanted to make sure it goes through the four major departments that deal with these issues, planning, building, engineering, and then administrative, just for carrying ourselves, to be kept in the loop. So, it doesn't really change how we process things, except incorporates more of a procedure and gives everyone the information, make sure everyone has a review. We recently had, with the last town engineer, put a process through where we abandoned some, I believe, an easement, and one of my other departments didn't really know about it. It kind of affected some of the way we did business. It's time now where I see a lot of these right-of-way issues are coming back up again. I just wanted to have a formal process for the council. This is what we came up with.
Questions from council?
My question. Is this an outcropping from the Lehman property?
An outcropping?
Well, they're looking for gaining access to their property on roads that evidently have been...
We have encroachment issues. It's different. This would be for actually if the town wanted to abandon a right-of-way or an easement. Regarding the Lehman properties, we actually own the right-of-way that's there now. People have encroached on it, so it's a little bit different. That's more of a, to be honest, to have the code enforcement officer meet with those folks and remove those encroachments on the property. It has came up, it's come up with, there's more in the past, but right now, it just seems right now that we're getting a lot of issues regarding right-of-ways and easements. People want to extinguish them or change them or move them. We have the one out on 36th Street. We have another guy who's encroached out there who maybe want to change that right-of-way. So, it just seemed to, I'd rather have a formal process in-house and make sure all the departments are aware of what's going on and be aware of that.
Yes, Council, let's go.
Yeah, Town Manager, I just had a question. So, this is really to clean up the issues similar to my old neighborhood where we have some drainage issues and that because right-of-way was given away in the past.
Correct. Right. Yes. Counsel, I'm going to...
Would there be any easements that we would not be interested in getting rid of in particular GLO patent easements?
I think right now, it's kind of, like I said, a little loosey-goosey. We don't know. Right now, it's going to be formalized, and departments are going to say, like, engineering, for example, say, we don't want to get rid of that because we have water sewer line easements, or we have a variety of different things. So, and this gives a truer mechanism for the council, say, no, we don't want to get rid of it because we may want to do something with the BLM or GLO easement and what have you. I didn't think of it that way, but...
Yeah, because they're created by Congress, and they stay forever on the patents, and I'm a little concerned that we'd be, even though state law allows that, there could be a lot of litigation involved that we don't need.
Right. I mean, obviously, we have legal counsel review, and we do anything on that. And this also, easements and right-of-ways are easements regarding on plaques. This doesn't affect that because you have to go through that process. So, this is more the standalone ones, and there's quite a few of them. It just seems, as of late...
And your question, this is volitional. You wouldn't have, you only want to abandon it if you wish to as a council. You don't have to.
Correct.
Right, okay. There is public comment on item number two. Ms. Carrie?
I have no speakers, Mayor.
Anyone wish to speak? Okay, back to council for a motion. Council, I'm going to thank you.
Move to approve Resolution R. 2016-13, a resolution, the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the town manager to establish a town process for the abandonment of public right-of-way and easements.
Second... Motion made and seconded, Council and Bunch.
To become an issue, you need to be able to fix it.
Councilman, that's where you are, the second.
I agree with Ernie. It's a framework, and it's a process, and it'll eliminate some of the confusion.
Anything else from council?
I just want to say I totally support this. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes clearly have it. Thank you, Council, three. Council discussion and authorization of an expenditure to Larson Excavating, totaling $96,455 for replacement of approximately 1,200 linear feet of deteriorating four-inch galvanized water main, oh, about time on this one, with a new eight-inch PVC water main in Hidden Valley Drive Bridge Road.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Dave Peterson, Town Engineer, Utilities Manager, Public Works Manager. As part of our infrastructure improvements, you know, we have capital improvement programs. One of the lines that has really, literally popped out, we've had, you know, dozens and dozens and dozens of leaks on this line. At one point, this four-inch line is crossing over the wash, and it's nothing but band clamp to band clamp to band clamp. It's time for upgrade on this line. So, we had received three bids from three, you know, very good contractors and presented to you our prices and, you know, proposed work, and looking for approval of 1,200 feet of main replacement. As part of this work, we'll be installing a new hydrant, we'll be relocating services. We're going to be working around our current 16-inch main cap line, so it's going to be a little bit tricky, so it requires some good attention, but, you know, we're prepared to do that, and asking for approval of the monies to do so, so.
Briefly, how will this change things in the neighborhood from what it is to what it will be?
Currently, the four-inch line we have, we've had so many breaks on that, I, you know, I've heard from quite a few of the folks in the neighborhood, this will stabilize the neighborhood, it will provide more consistent water quality flow, and it's just, you know, an upgrade of an old line that needs to come out.
Okay. Town Manager, something to add?
It's part of the program we started last year with Black Brown, fixing those water lines. This is a key one, so it's all part of that replacement program.
Right. As far as, you know, fiscal year 2015-16 budget, there was $100,000 put into the budget, and this money will be coming out of that.
Okay.
So, money invested wisely.
No questions from council? Council, that's your question.
Mr. Quick question. Larson was not the low bidder, but...
Oh, they were.
They were. The other one was $100,000. Mark them.
Oh, Larson was $96,455.
Okay, got it.
Next bid was about $4,000 above that.
I see.
Councilman, I'm going to see.
What my comment is, I'm glad it's a local company that we're supporting people in our community, and they are really outstanding. I've known the company a really long time. They did my road, and it's still, 20 years later, fantastic, so.
There's public comment on item number three. Ms. Carrie?
I have no comments.
Yes?
Hi, my name's Julie, and I live at the, Julie Bergman, I live at the intersection of Ridge Road and Hidden Valley, right where we're talking about.
Okay, would you mind repeating that into the mic as we're Skyping this to the...
Oh, okay. I'm Julie Bergman, and I live at 37841 North Hidden Valley Drive, right at the corner of Ridge Road and Hidden Valley Drive, and I just want to say how grateful I will be if you approve this. I've had a geyser 20 feet tall in my yard, it's wasting so much water, this whole thing, and I've gone through five years of writing letters and three town engineers, and you will just really make our neighborhood better. You can look down the street and see the whole left side where the water line is, it's all desert broom from all the disruption. The pipe's all exposed because I have to fix it all the time. I have to call the guys on my speed dial on the weekends. This will just be really a blessing. That's all. Thank you.
Well, apparently, third time is a charm.
Yes, he will be my hero.
There we go. No one else wishes to say anything? I'll bring it to council for a motion. Oh, there we go. Councilman, I'm going to...
Move to authorize an expenditure to Larson Excavating in an amount totaling $96,455 for replacement of approximately 1,200 linear feet of deteriorating... for replacement of approximately 1,200 linear feet of deteriorating four-inch water main with new eight-inch PVC water main.
Second.
I would imagine functionally, this four-inch line is probably two-inch or less. And in addition to the, to the, to the geysers that we've just described to us, it would seem like it'd be our responsibility to make that more reliable in the area.
Yes, we'll do that. Counselor McGuire, you have the second.
Yeah, this is a part of an ongoing effort on the part of staff to correct issues that we knew were coming when we purchased, probably would come when we purchased the water company. And it's a part of something that needs to occur.
Anything else from council? Carey, this is financial, the rule, please.
Counselor Esser?
Yes.
Counselor Bunch?
Yes.
Counselwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Counselman McGuire?
Yes.
Counselman Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Francia?
Yes, by unanimous vote, seven to zero, the motion clearly passes. No more geysers.
Agenda item number four, happy to be of service. Council discussion and authorization of an expenditure to United Truck and Equipment totaling $32,249.25 for replacement of a 4,000-gallon water tank and ancillary equipment of Public Works Water Truck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along the lines of equipment maintenance, or, you know, maintenance of key infrastructure, we have a 1999 Freightliner truck, one of our two water trucks. At this point, a completely new unit is cost prohibitive. It starts about $129,000. And we had looked at other units that were $160,000 and up. It's just not possible right now. So we looked at mechanisms to replace the tank on the back of this truck. We're estimating the truck is good for another four to five years with proper preventive maintenance. We're putting in $800 to about $1,300 a year into this truck for maintenance, which in the long run, you know, will, will buy us, we're estimating another four, five, six years. We had looked at different vendors for replacing the tank. It's a 4,000-gallon tank with the pump, the hose rails, all the valving controls, and the pertinences and sprays. And that came in around, you know, just over $32,000, which I had presented here. We did receive two bids that were within less than $400 of each other, so it's pretty, pretty indicative that we're, you know, in the ballpark here. We use this truck, you know, on a daily basis. We had used it up when we were reworking, you know, spore crops last week. We work, work with it. Right now, we're in the middle of our blading cycle out of Blading Road, so it's, it's used, you know, very, very frequently. This will provide, you know, a cost-effective way for us to do our work without, you know, spending five times the money.
On a daily basis, how many hours?
On average, probably, lately, we've been using it, you know, six to seven hours a day.
Four days a week?
On road, no, our Public Works crew is working five days a week, five days a week, yes.
30 hours a week?
On average, yes.
Couple of questions. I wish I would have known a little, that, known this was coming up, I could have probably helped out, because of stuff that my company is doing with these very same companies, to negotiate a better price for everybody. However, is the, is the tank one to be lined?
At this, we have an option for lining for, was it $3,500?
Okay, more importantly, is Larson, who won the bid?
No, this was United.
Or United.
United Truck and Equipment.
Larson was the previous one.
Correct.
Is there somewhere incorporated in the price? I didn't see it, that's why I'm asking, that they test it after they do it? In other words, they're not going to...
After they assemble, oh, that, yeah.
They're not going to just deliver to the town, say, here's your...
No, absolutely not. No, we wouldn't accept delivery until it were proven.
Counselor, number one.
Yeah, I made this request, I don't see Chief Kratz here tonight, but I kind of like to see our water trucks be able to connect to the, to rural metro's brush truck in case they have a need for water in emergency situations.
That we could ferry water in?
Yeah, you know, and whatever connection it needs, it's usually, usually only a couple of $300 or something. Is it on there? I know we can fill it from a fire hydrant, but can we actually seed the brush truck with it?
Yeah, Counselor Bunch, the last two trucks were, I have to check with this one, that was our policy.
You know, we want to make sure that we have that capability in case we need to, to get somewhere, if they run out of water, and we could help them. Good, thank you.
Last question, I'm assuming the chassis is fine?
Yes, good shape. The truck, truck only has, you know, less than 70,000 miles. Those are hard miles over rough terrain, but it's been well maintained.
Okay. Additional questions from council? Go to the public for comment on this, Adam? Anything? Okay, we're back. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to authorize the expenditure of the United Truck and Equipment in the amount of, in the amount totaling $32,249.25 for work, including materials and taxes to replace the 4,000-gallon water tank and ancillary equipment on the Public Works Water Truck. Second, motion made and second, Vice Mayor? It's kind of self-evident. Yeah. Oh, okay, self-evident. The role, please, Carey, since it's financial?
Counselor Bunch?
Yes.
Counselwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Counselman McGuire?
Yes.
Counselman Ford?
Yes.
Counselman Esser?
Yes.
Mayor Francia?
Yes, by unanimous vote, seven to zero, the motion passes. Thank you, Council. Five. Council discussion and approval of second reading of ordinance zero, 2016-02, amending the Town of Cave Creek Town Code, Chapter 52, Water, Section 52.301, Services to the Meter. Town Manager?
Mayor and Council, thank you. Again, it's a housekeeping issue, as I said before. You have a meter, you have an account. For whatever reason, the water company that you purchased from did not have that policy. So there's a bunch of meters that are in the ground that no one knows about. There's no accounts associated with it. So this is really, you have a water meter that's a town-owned in the ground, whether it's to a residential lot, commercial lot, vacant land, there's an account associated for it. Both inventory control, you know what's out there, we know where it is. And if they, start using usage, we have someone to connect it to, to actually assess them a fee to if they start using it.
Questions from council?
My question would be, are you...
No, that's all right, Counsel. It's easier for the woman who records the minutes when I say the name, so they know who's talking. But I think they will know you.
I think they might. Are you picking up the meters that people aren't using? You said there was a gentleman who had four lots, and they're just sitting there, and you want to charge them $50 if they're just going to be sitting there?
Right.
So now we'll just pick them up?
Correct. We're going to give folks, the discussion has been 30 days, 60 days, but give them a grace period to decide whether they want to keep the meters or not. If they do not want the meters, we're, we're collecting them. We've had, I think they've collected like 20, 25 people. People have said they knew this was coming. They don't want the meters anymore, so the guys have run out and collected. They kept them lying, so.
Mayor? Counselor, number four.
Will this, will this also be some of the abandoned lines that are out there? Because there are still meters on some of the abandoned lines?
Yeah, those would automatically come out, because the line's not active, so.
That's what I want to make sure. Thanks.
I really rely on field staff. They tend to know which lines, where some of those are, and they take them.
Public comment on agenda item number five? Okay, back to council. Counselor Ford, a motion?
Yeah. Council action needed, motion to give second reading to ordinance 02016-02 on ordinance of the Town of Cave Creek, Arizona, amending the Town of Cave Creek Town Code, Chapter 52, Water, Section 52.301, Services to the Meter.
Second, motion made and second, Counselor Ford.
I am happy that we're going to forward on this. I think it's important.
Counselor, number one, you have the second.
Supported the first read. I might as well support the second.
Anything else from council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes clearly have it, seven to zero. Thank you, council. Onto the sixth and final item of the evening, and I know you're disappointed, council, you wanted more, but council discussion and appointment of a... To fill the vacancy on the Water Advisory Committee. Town Manager?
Counselor and Mayor, at the request of the chairman, Tony Geiger, the WAC committee, wants to resubmit Pat Dixon to the committee. As you can see, he has a resume, a lot of experience in the business, especially dealing with water, small water systems and wastewater operators. They thought he would be a very good asset. I can't, don't know if he's here or not, I mean Sam, but they would forward his name again for your consideration to the WAC.
Okay, this is Pat Dixon from Desert Hills.
Yeah, he would be a Desert Hills representative.
Okay, so that's two representatives from Desert Hills.
Would be the separate.
Questions from council? There's public comment on agenda item number six. Back to council for a motion. Counselor Esser, thank you.
Well, let's see. Motion to appoint one citizen to fill the vacancy of the Water Advisory Committee with a term ending December 31, 2017.
Second. And that, that appointment would be Pat Dixon. Okay. Motion made and second, Counselor.
I think they're husband and wife.
Correct.
And that's a little unusual, but at least they can argue, take copies of each other's notes. So I'm in favor of them.
And they drink the same water. Counselor Ford?
I, I think it's great, because this way we do have our two representatives from Desert Hills. I think that's really important.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
The ayes clearly have it, seven to zero. Thank you, council. Motion to adjourn. So moved. Thank you, council.